Hello, this is Violet Haldean again with one of our series of understanding how government works. An education series to help communities learn about their local government. Today, we're going to be talking to Patrick DiLorenzo of the Town Council in the town of Bloomfield. And Chrisanne Fowles again will be our interviewer, speaking to Patrick. So, Chrisanne, I'm going to turn it over to you. And you can introduce yourself and start the discussion.
Okay, thank you. Hi, my name is Chrisanne, Chrisanne Fowles. And today, we're here with Patrick DiLorenzo.
First of all, thank you for having me. I appreciate this opportunity to be interviewed by you, Chrisanne. And I'm very pleased to be part of your educational role in trying to understand town government. So again, thank you for having me, and I appreciate it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
What was your journey like on becoming a member on the Town Council? Did you always want to become, be a member on the Town Council? What steps did you have to take? What strategies were required?
Right, to get here, right? It's a journey, exactly. That's a good way to put it. It's a journey. Like in life, many journeys. You know, I really never thought of being a member of Town Council originally. I've always been involved ever since I graduated from college and lived in Pennsylvania, you know, of course, up until I moved to Massachusetts and then eventually to Connecticut. But I always was involved in politics in one way or another, whether it was volunteering, or helping out, or just meeting the candidates, trying to support them. But I never had the desire for a role in politics at that time. But you know, one of the things, but again, I always was interested in community and learning about my community and how I could contribute to the community and how I could give back. And that was one of the things I was always raised that way. My parents were very involved, and my mother worked for the town of Hazel, the city of Hazelton, where we grew up, and she was a city administrator there. And so I wanted to do something as well in my life to try to give back. And even though I worked all the time and worked in different areas, had different jobs, I still felt like I had to have time to do, have other activities. And so when I moved to Connecticut, I, through my wife, actually, my wife Ellen, she discovered that there was a town committee here in Bloomfield. And she suggested, at the time, I was changing jobs. And prior, I was on travel all the time, so I was away from home. And once I started to be spending more time at home, my wife said, why don't I look into this committee? And so I did look into that town committee, and eventually I joined and became a member of it. And I started to get involved in going on to different committees within the town. I was on the Board of Assessment Appeals, and I was on the Ethics Commission. Although we were never, I, when I was on it, I was never called to actually meet as a commission, but I was on a member of the Ethics Commission. And then one of our town councilors was leaving the council for personal reasons, and it created a vacancy. And so through our committee and through the council, I was nominated to fill that vacancy. And I was approved. So I became a Town Council member back in 2013. And I am now in my fourth term as an elected member of the Town Council. So we have two-year terms that are, you know, voted on by the, by the public and by our residents of the town of Bloomfield. And so my term now runs through November of 2021. So not this November, but next November, I would be back up for reelection, should I choose to be on the committee or be, you know, one of those members considered to run for the Town Council. So I've been involved now for, I guess it's almost eight years on Town Council. And it's been a very fulfilling experience. I've gotten to know a lot of people. It has certainly helped me to, you know, as somebody new to the town of Bloomfield back then, I mean, it was a great way for me to get involved, to meet my neighbors, to be part of the community, and to be able to give something back to the community. So it's been a really good experience.
Okay.
I hope, I hope that answered your question.
Yes, it did. Which leads me to leave me to my other question. Were you elected by the mayor or the people?
Well, yes. No, I would have been, I'm elected by the residents of Bloomfield. The, we don't have an elected mayor here in the town of Bloomfield. We just have a Town Council. So our form of government is Town Council, Town Manager form of government. So we have nine members of the Town Council, as I mentioned earlier. And you cannot have more than six members of the same party, which right now is the Democrats are the majority and we are the minority. But then as a body, as a Town Council of elected officials, elected by the residents of the town of Bloomfield, we then nominate and vote on a mayor. So the mayor is a Town Councilor, but they are then given that title as mayor. So they then represent the nine of us as the, the sort of the head of the Town Council. And, you know, they then work as, as a mayor representing the town of Bloomfield. But there's no elected mayor, only elected by the full body of the Town Council.
Okay, um. Are you and the other members on the, the Town Council in the process of electing a new mayor? Or when, when do you guys plan on electing?
Right. Yep. So the mayor is elected or voted upon right after the election. So after the, this last election was, you know, in, in last year, in 2019. So right after the election and right after the results were posted, at our very next Town Council meeting in November, that's when one of the agenda items is to elect the mayor. So we then nominate a mayor and nominate a person to be the mayor. They make a motion, and the motion is seconded, and then there's discussion, and then we take a vote. So we all voted and elected Suzette Bethem Brown, and she is the mayor of the town of Bloomfield. And she is also a member of our Town Council.
Okay, thank you.
And we also have a deputy mayor. So just so you know, we, not only do we elect the mayor after the election, but we also vote, nominate and vote on the deputy mayor. So in the event that we're at a meeting and the mayor is unable to attend or be, not be present for whatever reason, then the deputy mayor steps up and he fulfills the duties of the mayor for that particular meeting while we're, you know, while the mayor is absent.
Okay, thank you. Exactly what roles and responsibilities does a Town Council have?
Okay, so really, like I said a little bit earlier, that the form of government we have is a Town Council and a Town Manager. So the Town Council mainly determines policy and sets policy and sets ordinances. So if the code, the, something has to change in the town code, like say it's, just an example, an ordinance for noise, or an ordinance for traffic, or an ordinance for grass mowing, you know, something like that. Those things come before the council, and then we, we change town ordinances and we set that policy. And then you have a town, you have a hearing that's open to the public. And we present that town ordinance change, and we allow public comment before we vote on it. And then we change that policy. So the Town Council sets policy and votes on changes to the town ordinances. We're also responsible for setting the budget. The Town Manager creates the budget with all the department heads, and they present that to the council. And we deliberate, and then we approve the town budget for the fiscal year. The town of Bloomfield runs on a fiscal year from June the first, I'm sorry, July the first through June 30th. July the first through June 30th is our fiscal year. So we then vote on that budget, and then we set what's called the mill rate, so we know how much the taxes will be. And then that is set in a public hearing. So we do all of those kinds of things where the council, again, sets policy, and the Town Manager manages the town. So the Town Manager is the administrator of the town. He's like our chief executive. He reports to the Town Council. We hire the Town Manager, and he's under contract with the town of Bloomfield. And that Town Manager manages all the departments within the town. So your Public Works, your Police Department, all of those departments. We have Leisure Services, Social Services. He is, oversees all of those departments, and those department heads report to the Town Manager. So council sets the policy, manager runs the town.
Okay, um, thank you.
You're welcome.
Earlier, you mentioned that there are nine members on the Town Council.
Correct.
So is each member responsible, responsible or, yeah, responsible for a certain region in Bloomfield? Or how does that work?
Nope, we're all equally, every council member is equal. We are all the same. We were all elected. We represent, all of us represent the entire town. So we don't separate anything out as far as areas or districts or anything like that. We represent all of the town of Bloomfield, and we consider everyone, every resident to be our constituent. And we will respond and listen to any resident that comes before us with whatever their, you know, situation is. And we'll try to respond to that in whatever way we can.
Okay, thank you. Earlier, you mentioned that you have, no, a Town Council has a two-year term. But I was curious. Is a Town, is being a Town Council a full-time job?
Ah, that's a good question. So the Town Council in Bloomfield, we receive no compensation. So there is no payment or no paycheck or any money of any kind that we get. It's strictly a voluntary job. Of course, we're elected, you know, by the residents of Bloomfield to perform our jobs and our responsibilities, but there is no compensation for it. Now, it's not full-time, but it does take a good chunk of your time because we're required, again, by the charter of the town of Bloomfield, we're required to have two Town Council meetings per month. We meet on the second and fourth Monday of every month. Today would be a Town Council day, however, it's a Jewish holiday, so we've postponed our meeting until tomorrow, which will be our second meeting for the month of September. So we have two Town Council meetings every month throughout the year. Some of them get canceled depending on the situation. Like a lot of times in, I know, December, we may cancel a meeting because of, you know, the Christmas holidays or whatever. So meetings will get canceled. But in general, we meet two times a month. In addition to that, we have what we, subcommittees of the council. So we have five or six subcommittees that also meet throughout the month at different times. They meet one time per month. So you have the Finance Committee, you have the Economic Development and Land Use Committee, you have the Committee on Committees, we have the Ad-Hoc Golf Committee, we have the Administration and Education Subcommittee. So all of these committees, oh, we have the, our Public Safety Committee. And we also have a Committee for Leisure, Leisure Services. I forget the exact name of that meeting. But all the subcommittees, so they all meet once a month. So if you're a member of that Subcommittee, you know, you're expected to attend that. So overall, we probably spend, you know, I spend several hours per month doing town activities, you know, for the town, whether it be the council meeting, or a Subcommittee meeting, or some other activity that we do. Like recently, we just had a big celebration where we painted, we had local artists come in to the town of Bloomfield, and we painted Black Lives Matter around the circle. I don't know if you've seen that. Yeah, so we just had a huge ceremony for that on, right, the week of Labor Day, or right before Labor Day. And so that was an event, you know, that we attended as council members, you know, in the evening. So there will be several events like that where we, we go as a council member to be in attendance. So we do make a lot of decisions around the budget. And yes, some of the decisions that we make certainly could impact various departments within the town. And it's up to the manager, it's up to the Town Manager to build and create the budget with input from all of the town departments. So they do the initial input of the budget and develop the budget that they present to the Town Council. And then each of the departments come before the council and provide their, you know, their needs, their wants, the things that they feel are important to them, and why their budget may have increased, and why they need more money. And so we will take all of those things into consideration as we go through the budget. It's a very long, very long process. So the budget, like for example, for next year's budget, that work is already begun. So the, all the departments, by the end of this year, by the end of December, they will be responsible to be providing to the manager what their budget needs are going to be for the next fiscal year. And starting in around the March timeframe, March of 2021, we'll start having our budget meetings. So these are all meetings in addition to all the other meetings that we just talked about. So during the month of March, we'll have a general overview of the budget by the Town Manager that he's providing, presenting to the council. And then we'll have all of the departments come before the council and present what they think their budget needs are going to be. So we have to take into consideration our taxpayers because most of the money that runs the town comes from our taxpayers. We do get some additional monies from the state, we get some monies from grants, we get some monies, you know, for different things. But the bulk of the money that is used to support the town comes from the taxpayer. And those taxpayers are, you know, homeowners, people that own property, own a home, own vehicles, they pay a tax, and that tax is used. And then we have a large, you know, we have businesses. We have many businesses in the town of Bloomfield who pay a huge tax. Like for example, the company I work for is Cigna. So, and Violet will know this as well. So Cigna is in the town of Bloomfield. They have a lot of land, they have a lot of buildings. They pay, they're one of our largest taxpayers within the town of Bloomfield. We also have Eversource, we have, you know, Pepperidge Farm, we have a couple of other Command Corporation, we have Dunkaster Seaberry. All of those also contribute to our tax base. So we, you know, rely on all of that money to help fund our budget for the whole fiscal year. But we have to take in a lot of things into consideration, you know, as we go through because, for one thing, we don't want to reduce services. We want the town of Bloomfield's residents to continue to get the good services they get today and at a quality, at quality and cost. So we, you know, we want to make sure that whatever budget's presented isn't decreasing the amount of services, and it's not taking anything out of, you know, what we do for the public. So especially in our social services area, in our senior, senior services area. We have a lot of seniors in the town of Bloomfield. And, you know, we don't want to jeopardize any of the services that they receive today. So we do look at all of those things. But when we're in challenging times such as this with COVID, you know, it's very hard. We, we've had to make a lot of cuts in this last year. And we've asked all of our departments to look into their budgets and, you know, help us determine what they could live without because we needed to make sure that we had sufficient monies. We couldn't really, this was a year that we could not raise taxes. So if we didn't have enough money to fund the budget, what would happen in the end is we'd have to raise the taxes. And the Town Council, at least my position, is that I don't want to raise taxes. So I would not be in favor of voting for a budget that raised the taxes on the taxpayers who work so hard to get the money that they have. And under such challenging times that we are in right now, a lot of people have either lost jobs or they, you know, don't have the ability to pay more than they're currently paying. So this past year, we made sure that we did not raise the taxes. And we worked very hard with the department heads and the Town Manager and all of the offices to make sure that we weren't doing anything to have to raise the taxes. And so this year, it worked out really well. We also, there's also the Board of Education. So one thing to remember is that the Board of Education is completely separate from the Town Council. So while we have a Board of Ed who has a very large budget, we, the Town Council, do not control the Board of Education's budget. They are in charge of their budget and how they manage it. However, they present a budget to the Town Council as well. And if they need an increase in what their normal budget is, they request that increase. And it's up to the council to say yes or no, whether or not we will give them what they're asking for. So this particular year, again, because it was so difficult with COVID, the School Board, the Board of Education in Bloomfield was asking for a substantial increase, but we were not able to give them that full increase. And so they, they got additional monies, and then they have to figure out within their budget how they're going to make it work. But, you know, we're certainly open to working with the Board of Ed as we get through this year, you know, with all the changes for COVID, see how their budget is going to work out as the year goes on, and see if they need extra money. We will work with them to determine whether or not we could, we could do that.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
What does the phrase, "all politics is local," mean to you?
Yes, you know, I don't consider us to be part of the national scene. So in my mind, you know, what goes on in the country is totally separate from the town of Bloomfield. You know, we just have our little town here, and that's all I really care about. We have, what, about 21, maybe a little over 21,000 people in the town of Bloomfield. And, you know, to me, that's what our focus is. And so I try to work across the aisle, if you will. So even though I'm a Republican, I don't necessarily believe that that being a Republican should cause us not to come to an agreement on something, or at least be able to talk about and negotiate. We don't have to agree on everything, but, you know, I think it's important for us to talk about it. And then maybe we agree to disagree. But we're trying to do the best possible thing for the town of Bloomfield and our residents. So I like to keep the things to the local level and try to keep what's going on in the country out of it, you know, and not, not worry about that. Because even though, you know, we have different parties involved on the council, we have one goal, one common goal, and that is the people of Bloomfield. That's who we represent, the town of Bloomfield. And so our goal is to do the right thing for the town. And sometimes that means, you know, working together. It means you have to work together and talk about the issues and try to come to an agreement on what that is. So even though I don't always agree with some of the things we do, if it's best for the town of Bloomfield, you go with it because that's what we're here to do.
Okay, thank you. How do you like your job as a member of the council?
Well, I like it. I think it's, you know, as I said earlier when we started talking, I feel it's very important to give back to the community. And to be a part of a community means you have to give something. You've got to try to make it better. You've got to help people and help the community and keep it together. And the thing I like about Bloomfield is we're a highly diverse community, and I like that. I think it, it brings many different opinions, many different visions, many different, you know, many different talents. So we have a wide variety of people in the town, and I think it's good for the town to have that. And I think, you know, it, you know, you like what you do as much as you can do. So I, like I said, I don't think we, everything I do, people aren't always going to like some of the decisions I make or vote on. But when I make those decisions, I try to have all the facts. I try to base that decision on those facts, and then what's best for the town of Bloomfield. So you're not always going to be liked, or your decisions aren't always going to be, you know, viewed as the best ones by the town. But I think everybody, you know, everybody has an opinion, and they're certainly allowed to have that. So, you know, I, I try to do the best that I can and try to help the community to thrive, to be stronger, to be better. You know, because we all have to live here and work here, and we want the town to be the best it can be. We want to have nice places to go, nice things to see. We want to keep the town looking good so that people come into the town. We want more people to move here. You know, we want the town to be a place that people say, hey, I, I like Bloom, I know about Bloomfield, I want to go there. So we want to keep it that way. And, you know, that's, that's my goal, is to, you know, do the things that make Bloomfield a place that people want to come to.
Okay, um, and my final question for you. How can the residents of Bloomfield contact you?
On our website. If you go out to the town of Bloomfield's website, all of our names, our phone numbers, our email, we have a town email address. We're more than happy to get those emails. Or you can just call the Office of the Town Manager and ask to speak to, get information about one of us on the council, and they will provide that information for you. But we're certainly here to help and here to listen to the community.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Chrisanne.
You're welcome.
Certainly nice to meet you, and good luck. I hope, I hope this was helpful. I hope you got some good information. And, you know, if you do have any follow-up questions, feel free to ask Violet, or get, you know, get my email and email me, and I'll be happy to, to answer them. And I would like to invite you, if you are so inclined and would like to join one of our Town Council meetings to see how the process works. Right now, we're still meeting over Zoom. We don't have in-person meetings due to the COVID-19. But you can certainly sign up and join a Zoom meeting as a participant, and you can hear the council in full, the full council in action two times a month, the second and fourth Monday.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you're welcome.
Thank you, Patrick. Really appreciate it.
Absolutely. I was happy to do it. Hope I didn't talk too much.
No, 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 you provided a lot of good information. And thank you, Chrisanne. And as I said, you know, this is something that we're doing. We're trying to inform our community as to how government works. We're doing this perfect Bloomfield in Windsor. And so we appreciate taking the time out for this. And Chrisanne, as always, I appreciate you. Great interview.
Yes.
Yep. Yep. So thanks. And I'm just going to um, put up my little exit screen here.
All right.
Yes, and we'll be in touch. Thank you.
Sounds good. All right, have a good night.
Thank you.
All right, bye, Chrissanne. Nice meeting you.
Bye, nice meeting you as well.
All right.
Hey, thank you.
You're welcome.